Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we shift our focus, but not our priorities. Over the past few weeks, we've been digging into the state of education in Delaware. The hard truths about student performance, systematic failures, and the uncomfortable question of accountability. And while tonight, we're taking a brief pause from that statewide conversation, make no mistake, education hasn't left our thoughts. In fact, we're zeroing in on where it starts. You know where that is? Your local school boards. Because while governors give speeches and legislators pass bills, it's school board members who decide what your children learn, how they learn it, and whether your voice as a parent makes it pass the front office. We begin in the Brandywine School District, where Brian Jordan, Kenyon Wilson, and Dr. Tracy Woodson are competing for a seat. And frankly, it carries more influence than voters realize. We'll ask them why they're running, how they plan to address the district's biggest challenges, and what separates their approach from the rest. Next, we're going to head to the Smyrna School District, where Justine Flint joins us via Zoom. We'll dig into with her post-pandemic priorities, her vision for academic achievement, and how she defines real transparency between schools and parents. And finally, we'll be, we'll join Dr. Julia Callaher, excuse me, at First State Educate, an organization working to increase voter awareness and engagement in schools, especially in school board elections. We'll talk about what they're doing, why it matters, and what voters need to consider before they cast their ballots. Three conversations, one central issue, who's making the decision that will shape the future of your child's education? Well, this is the agenda. We're not here for fluff, we're here for facts. Hello, everyone. Kerwin here, host of the agenda. As we talked about in our intro, we are here today to talk about school boards in Newcastle County, as well as other counties here in the state, how important they are, because a lot of people don't understand how important school boards are, how important these school board members are to the overall education of your child. They set the standard. They set the standard. That's, that's a fact. We've seen school boards get out of hand, especially last spring with the Christina School District. We've seen decisions made, and people don't understand. So we're going to talk about the importance of the number of votes that it takes to get legislation passed within your school district. We're going to talk about all that tonight. We're going to make sure that you know, so you can make an educated vote. Brandywine School District's a little different. They have three vacant seats, right? Is it three vacant seats, everybody here?
Yes.
Before I introduce my guest, they have three vacant seats, so we have three candidates here to discuss it. We're excited. Let's dig in. First, Dr. Tracy Woodson, welcome to the agenda.
Thank you.
First time, I appreciate you. We love first-time guests. Mr. Kenyon Wilson, thank you so much for joining us here on the agenda.
Thank you, Dave.
And Mr. Brian Jordan.
Thank you.
We are excited about the power that you all have. I think with all that's going on in our legislation right now, and, and, and in our country in regards to legislation, excuse me, I think, I could be wrong, you all can correct me, I think that Americans, in their frustration, we saw the poll numbers, right? I think it's 52% of the country say that our current president is doing a bad job. That's more than any other president has ever had. Those are approval numbers. But there's something about a bad job, and we know this from work, that makes people pay attention to what you're doing.
Yes.
If I'm the person in the factory that's cutting the cloth wrong, everybody's looking because they don't want to stop the assembly line, right? And I think because of what's going on right now in our country, especially what's going on in the state in regards to education, because we're so far behind, we have so many issues, people are paying attention, and they want to know what's going on. So the school board, I think, is great. For Brandywine, I think, is great. Please tell us a little bit about yourselves.
Well, I am two years retired, 25 years of experience in professional public school education. Two years retired, as I was saying. I've been an interventionist, I've been a teacher, an assistant principal, and then finally, a principal at Springer Middle School.
And you can't get enough.
I can't get enough. No, I actually cannot get enough. I enjoyed my 25 years. It was my second career. And so I'm looking forward to getting back in a fight, if you will, because I live in my community. I live right down the street from Springer Middle School.
Okay.
Those are my kids. And for 15 years, Springer was my family. And it just disturbs me when I see the scores as low as they are.
And tell us what scores you're talking about. For people at home that may not know, we talk about NIAP scores, we talk about state testing, and all these other things, but some folks may still not know.
What I'm talking about are the state assessment scores, which unfortunately lag almost a year behind the, the actual test. At the beginning of a school year, I'm given that, all the assessments that the students are going to get. And I block those days out, or weeks out. And then we test on those days. Well, the most recent assessment scores came back, and we attended the most, the March Board Meeting. 44% of our kids are only proficient, are proficient in, in, in reading, excuse me. 34% of our kids are proficient in mathematics.
That's it.
That's it.
34% of the students in the Brandywine School District.
Yes.
34%.
Yes.
Are proficient in mathematics.
Only 34%.
So, within the grades that were tested in the Brandywine School District, only 44% of those students are reading at a level that the state and federal government would deem proficient.
Yes.
And I would think-
As a district.
As a district. And I would also think, correct me if I'm wrong, employers would deem that as proficient, because there's a cognitive nature. And I'm, I'm not an educator, but I, I am a parent, and I, and I know how their minds work, when they do work. There is a cognitive thing that goes on, right, between reading and mathematics that helps you deal with other problem sets. And I'm saying that, and I'm being very basic, because it seems as though our legislators have forgotten about that, especially the ones in Washington, because they're not fixing this problem. The legislators in Dover know how I feel. They're not fixing this problem.
This problem has existed, not just with the COVID. Now, 2000, it, when I look at the data, it was 2016, 2013, when you see the scores dramatically get lower and lower and lower. So this is not a, a solely COVID issue. This started four or five years before COVID, and you could see the steep decline, and that's where we are right now. That's frustrating. What, what's frustrating also is that our NAEP scores, that's the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Delaware.
I've read the report.
We, we are behind our friends to the east in New Jersey, our friends to the north in Pennsylvania.
We're behind everybody.
Our friend to the west in Maryland, and our friends to the south in Virginia. We lag behind all four of those states. So if you look at Delaware, what is wrong with Delaware?
I don't know, because we're spending a lot of money.
We are.
And we're still getting negative results.
Yes.
I don't know. Kenyon Wilson, thank you so much for joining. You are running. I'm excited. We serve on boards together. I know you.
Yes, we do.
But some folks don't know you.
A lot of people don't know me, so. So my name's Kenyon Wilson, as you mentioned. I currently work with the Southbridge CDC. I'm now, work for the community. I work in the community, so it's a community development corporation focused on that area. Outside of that, I am a father of four, have four in four different schools, two in Brandywine School District. So my older two aren't in the district anymore, but they came up in the elementary school, in the Brandywine School District. So I realize Brandywine, Brandywine is unique, and it's neighborly, it's, it stood out to me, much better than another school district I went to, I grew up in. But outside of that, me and my wife, we, we work, we both work in the community. We both didn't have the traditional upbringing that, that we're bringing our children up in. And we got, we need to do better for, for our students. And one of the reasons that I joined the race is, we want to do the work to help be catalysts for change for these, for these students. As we're doing for our, our children, we want better for all children. We want to get more parents involved. And a lot falls on parents, just the cost of living, all these things, all these factors come into place when it comes to declining test scores.
Yeah.
It's not just, you know, the schools is failing, it's because parents aren't as engaged as they used to be.
That's a factor, absolutely, it's a factor.
It is. So one of the things that happened with us is that we got involved with the education, education program, educating parents on how to advocate for, for their children. And the one thing that made a big difference for us is we saw those test scores as parents, because we don't typically see those things.
No, we don't.
Right? If you're not in education, you don't know where to go to when it comes to finding test scores, understanding proficiency rates, attendance rates, all of those things. So through that program, it taught us parents how to find those resources, how to find comprehensive improvement plans with the schools, how to find the scorecards for each schools. You can go around online and actually look at the scorecards and look at these scores.
So you're very interested in, in continuing that advocacy?
Yes, sir.
For the students, not, I mean, of course, in the Brandywine School District, but I have a feeling that those decisions are, you want them to be transparent throughout the state as well, and helping young learners learn. And I think advocacy is huge. I love it when board members are also public advocates that are there getting their hands dirty, so to speak, rolling up their sleeves, because how else do you really know what's going on? You know, how do you know? How do you know?
You don't.
How do you know? How, how are you going to tell a principal of Springer for several years, somebody from Southbridge, how, how are, that, that works in Southbridge, that understands that? How, how are you going to tell these people any different in regards to what's going on in the community?
You really don't know. So school boards are not on the radar of the communities that I serve and I, I live in. Their schools are not on the radar. When there's an issue, you go to the teacher, or you go to the principal.
Right.
That's all you know.
Right.
And then if, if you've been in, in the, in the system long enough, if you have a student that has an IEP or on 504, you start, you start to learn the system, but for the vast majority, that's a whole hidden, hidden area for us. So part of the reason that I'm running for this space is to bring light to just the whole educational system. Then you talk about the language that's used, it's above most of our heads.
Absolutely.
We have no idea what's going on, so.
I use flashcards, it keeps it, it keeps me grounded. Mr. Brian Jordan, thank you for joining us here on the agenda.
Thank you.
Please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, I join my colleagues here with their concerns about boosting student outcomes. But for me, you know, I entered Sherlidge Elementary just up the street here in the 1980s, under a federal court desegregation order. I arrived on a bus from the suburbs, because more than 30 years after Brown, Delaware's schools were still segregated. And I, you know, I didn't know it at the time, but as I grew up, I came to realize that the federal government had a role as a guarantor of equal protection and equal opportunity. I've got two girls in the Brandywine School District, Natalia and Lancashire. They face a much different situation. They face a federal government that is not the same role. They face a federal government that's cutting funding, that's seeking to dismantle the Department of Education, that's seeking to tinker with the curriculum, and that's, that's also intimidating immigrant communities with federal law enforcement. And those all affect the schools and the students in our schools. And so I'm, I'm running because I think the school board has got to take a more proactive stance in addressing these challenges. And I think we can. I think there are ways to do that. But it's going to require a school board that is part of the school district community. And I don't mean just the parents who send their school, their kids to schools, I mean everybody in that community. And it's not just one that affects the Brandywine School District, it affects the entire state. And I, I see power in numbers, and I'm running to, to get that power.
Yeah.
So we can get the numbers and challenge these.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I think for today, if I'm at home, and I'm watching this program, like so many of you do, I want to know from the people sitting around this table, in this culture that we have now, from the scared CNN texts that we get on our phone, because we don't know what this administration is going to do from day to day. I mean, really, that's not an exaggeration, from day to day, you don't know what's going to come via executive order of legislation or what have you. You need to know, the same thing I told the governor last week, we need to know that there is somebody at the helm that shares my views. You don't have to share all my views. We don't have to agree on everything, but I need to know that there's someone of caliber, that, of a caliber that is just, that I agree with. I agree with. And this is a great forum to do that. So please, in a few words, or as many words as you think is necessary, please tell the folks at home, starting with you, sir, that you are in fact that person.
I will say this, honesty, integrity, transparency, those three words, that's what they can expect from me. When you go to a school board, that's all they want to hear. They want to hear what you're going to, what they're listening to is honest? Do you have the integrity to stand up for it? And most importantly, are your thoughts transparent? Can they read into it? Can they see the numbers behind what you're saying? And unfortunately, and I have to say this with all honesty and transparency, is that in the last couple of years, we've had less and less and less of transparency in the Brandywine School District. This most recent superintendent was hired by four people. That's all it takes. The other three did not vote for her. Now, I don't know if they would have voted for her, but the four votes for Dr. Lawson were garnered before they came out to the floor. That should not have happened. There was no transparency behind it, and there was no discussion with the community, there was no discussion with teachers, you know, there were several emails that, that were floated around. But in a district this size, what they should have done was to do a national search and select the best candidate. I'm not saying Dr. Lawson is not the best candidate, but it wasn't done honestly, and it was no transparency behind that selection.
Sounds like governance to me. I don't know, but it sounds like governance and transparency. I get it. Kenyon, tell us a little bit about why you should sit on the board for the Brandywine School District.
All right, so what's the whole point of school boards? It's improved student outcomes. We want to see our students do, do better. We want our children to have a better, a great quality of life. We want to have a good quality of life, whether you have a child or not. So at the end of the day, the, the main reason we want our children to go to school, we want them to be safe, and we want them to move on and, and actually be a productive member of society.
Yes.
So how, so that's, that's all of our wants. So that's what I'm focused on, bringing community back to the schools, because it's been, it's been, we've been spread apart, and community is what matters. And as Dr. Woodson mentioned, transparency is a huge part of it, because if the community's not involved in the decision-making, that's where the, that's where the issues lie.
I call it the slick stuff.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when the slick stuff happens.
That's exactly when the slick stuff happens. You have to involve the community at every step of the way. And as a school board member, you are a representative of the community, because parents, they can't do it all. It can't be the, the police of everything and hat, and take care of the lives and take care of their children, do all the things, and also police, police the superintendents in the schools. So as school board members, we are their representatives.
Right.
We have to get back to that. Right now, this, we've mentioned it before, it flies below the radar. You know, they don't have to be accountable to, to, to the constituents, because the constituents don't even have a relationship with school board members. So that should change, that's the reason why I'm running.
I love it. Brian Jordan, please tell us.
Well, I think parents want a believer. And I'm a believer, because a believer's a fighter. I believe that schools build communities. And one of the things that we're going to need to do is to fight for our students. And that's going to be, I mentioned earlier about the federal government's role. You know, for example, there's, there's efforts now to cut funding that would provide free school meals to students. That could be the only food that these kids get. And if they're not getting fed, they're going to go hungry, and that's going to lower student outcomes if they show up.
That's right. Some of our students, that's the only reason they come in the school.
And then, and if they're not there, and they're truant, then it becomes a community problem. And so we're going to pay for the community to take care of it. Instead, we invest that money in the schools. And again, I believe that schools build communities, and we can use that. There's a federal lawsuit right now that's trying to eliminate as unconstitutional 504 accommodations. And if you don't know what those are, 504 accommodations are the tools that provide special education students with the tools that they need to learn. It could be extra time on a test, it could be assistive technology that helps a student who can't see or hear, see the, see and hear. So what can we do about it? Well, I believe the, the, the school board has a role in that, a proactive role. Let's set a policy that says we're going to preserve those 504 accommodations as they exist today. And like Mr. Wilson was saying, get our constituents in, go to the community. Parents, what are your suggestions on how we can improve this? Teachers, send us a committee with suggestions on how we can enhance this, so that way our students with special needs are going to have those needs met in a better manner than they are today.
Okay, so let's think about it now. Where do you see the Brandywine School District in the next three years? What's your vision? Where are we going with this thing, gents? Is it going to get better? Are we going to be able to pull out of this? Because let's be honest, say what you want, the Department of Education's going away, all right? They were kind of Big Brother watching everything, and they were helping us determine and ensure that students that have, that are vulnerable. In today's climate, we're being well taken care of. Now that falls directly onto the states, correct? Also, depending on what the government, how the governor feels, excuse me, about this, we're going to lose some more funding, right? If, if, if we say, hey, look, we're going to stick with DEI, and that's diversity, equity, and inclusion, and all of the teachings to go along with that, we're not going to take away books about Harriet Tubman, we're not going to take away books about Maya Angelou, we're not going to say that slavery was okay, and all these other things. We're not going to do that, right? That means the people in Dover are taking a stand. And so that also means we're going to lose 10% of our overall funding per student, right? Again, I go back to the original question, what does Brandywine School District, if you had your druthers, what does it look like in three years?
I'm an optimist. I want to believe-
God, I hope so.
I want, I have to, I have to believe that the Brandywine School District is going to turn this thing around.
Yeah.
The, the scores can go lower, but, but my sense is that we're going to understand the problem that we have, look it straight on, and just deal with it. I hope we don't have to make a decision between Harriet Tubman and, and, and a broken building.
The Naval Academy did.
They're going to have to deal with it.
West Point did.
Yes, they did. Yes, they did. And, and I'm hoping that Dr. Lawson, the board, the current board, or, or the future board, will, will make those smart decisions, because it's not a, it's not a zero-sum game. We have to decide that, yes, children need to know about Martin Luther King, they need to know about Harriet Tubman, they need to know about our black history. Black history is American history, period, end of sentence.
But all, for all black and brown people, Native American history.
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that, I mean, seriously, there's so much that's going on that, that, that needs to be talked about in our schools, and it's just being, Doc, it's just being, it's just, I don't know, I'm frustrated. As a lawyer, Brian, as a lawyer, what is, what is your feel on this?
I mentioned you need a believer, because a believer's a fighter. Three years, we're either fighting, or the fight's over.
Right.
And, and the thing is, you know, there's a federal law, though, that says you cannot withhold federal funds to, because you don't like what's in the curriculum. That, that's first, the first fight. Second one, though, to carry out that fight, you have to have a community. And when you look at this community, you mentioned Harriet Tubman, there's the statue down there, Thomas Garrett and Harriet Tubman at the riverfront, there's the statue of Louis writing out there. Those things mean something. They mean something. They mean something to me.
To a lot of people.
And that's what we're fighting for.
Yeah.
Because, and, and there's a law in Delaware that requires the, the teaching of black history in the schools. Let's double down on that. As Dr. Woodson said, you know, the central question in American history is race. We've got to teach it. We have to. We have a rich, diverse history, and we're shortchanging our kids if we don't teach it. There's Hocheston School 107C, if you're familiar with that.
I'm very familiar with it.
A lot of people in Delaware aren't. We need to get our kids out there. And if you don't know, you got to look it up. It's part of that experiential learning, and it builds a community of value. That's what we're fighting for.
And that's what you're saying, you're going to bring that voice to the Brandywine School District school board?
Loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
I'm not going to back down.
I, I hope not, because I'm worried. Kenyon, I'm worried.
And you have a right to be. So let me answer your question. So three years, so there's many areas that we can go in, but when you think about the, the federal funding that, that could be lost, one of the things we do have to get more creative when it comes to funding, we need to be looking at alternative sources of funding. You mentioned 10%. I don't know exactly what it is for federal funding, I think it's a little bit less, around 10% of our federal funding. We have all of these banks, we have all of these, all, we have all this business in, in Delaware.
But why am I paying taxes and I'm depending upon a bank for public school? Why is it that I, I don't miss, I see it come out of my mortgage every month, right? Property taxes for the county, it gets funneled through to the county, back to the state for education. Why should I have to depend on Citibank to ensure that these kids have whatever they need? You know what I mean? I understand where you're coming from, but dang on it. What, I mean, are you trying to tell me that my money is not going to go to, to education despite you're taking it out every month, and then you're going to determine which education it goes to?
It's going to take political will in Dover to change things. And let me tell you, the referendum process.
Yes.
You know, we're, in Delaware, these kids have a right, a constitutional right to an education, and we're putting that up for a vote on how much they get. We don't put the Public Defender's Office budget up for a vote.
Sure enough, though.
We put our kids' future up, and I think Dover's got to get involved with this. And it's going to take legislation. But, you know, the whole school district funding system is a patchwork of systems that are meant to deal with discrete problems instead of a coherent process.
Yeah.
And we, again, it's not just a Brandywine School District issue, it's a statewide issue.
Yes.
But the school districts, I think, have a critical voice in coming up with the solutions and going to Dover and saying, this is what we need to do.
What do you think about the possible redistricting in Newcastle County? And through the state? I mean, let's be honest, because you're on a school board, and you are elected, within the next three years, that's coming up, gentlemen.
Yes, it is.
That's going to be a discussion that you're going to have to have. And, and I'm, I'm curious to know your thoughts.
Can I, can I say something to that?
Please.
So you mentioned redistricting. It's a big thing in Wilmington right now.
Absolutely.
Wilmington is talking about it. But are they talking about it in Claymont? Are they talking about it in all over Newcastle County? Because this affects the whole Newcastle County. And there was a post yesterday mentioning the possible redistricting, and it was crickets. And I realized that, that the transparency part, when we talk about getting people involved and having a conversation.
Right.
People Wilmington may be having that conversation, but then it's not, it's not being, it's not being transparent enough. The Reading Consortium, Reading Consortium is doing their work, but how, how are we having these conversations outside of the city? Because once it affects, once it comes into effect, guess what? You're going to have all of these people that felt like they're not a part of the process.
Absolutely.
But this affects me. So that's, that's a serious issue. Because once they feel they weren't affected, and once they feel they weren't included, then that's when, you know, the pitchforks start coming out.
Right.
And then you have many examples all over the country.
Man, I hope not.
You have many examples all over the country when redistricting didn't work and the wealthier schools wanted to pull out.
Yeah.
And that created even a bigger mess.
So if we're looking at a pie chart, how, I mean, let's be honest, right now, in regards to the Brandywine School District, how many parents do you think are knowledgeable and know about redistricting well enough to make a decision?
Not enough. I'll be honest.
Would you say 20% maybe?
No.
Not even close.
Not even close. Maybe 10%? No?
I don't even think 10%.
5%?
Maybe.
Maybe.
5% of parents, of students now being educated within the district that you're running for the board for.
Yes.
Are well-educated about redistricting and how it affects them and their youngster.
That's correct.
Where does that problem lie?
There's so many other issues. Honestly, there's just so many other issues that are out there that are not, that this issue that we're talking about is not getting through. You've got food. You've got taxes. You've got the reassessment that the county is putting through.
Yeah.
This, this falls so low. I don't think it's 5%, gentlemen. It's not an issue for people in the Brandywine School District. Not for any, you know, not for lack of concern. I just don't think it has elevated itself to 5% or 10%. It's just not there.
That's disappointing all the way around. Please stay up with us in this conversation. We'll be right back. Only 5%.
Looking for a reliable and efficient way to travel around Delaware? Dart has a variety of routes and schedules to meet your needs. Providing service in Newcastle, Kent, and Sussex Counties. Whether you are commuting to work or exploring the sights and sounds of the state, our fleet of buses are well-maintained, equipped with modern amenities. Public transportation is the green alternative. Plan your trip today. Download our transit apps or visit dartfirststate.com.
Okay, everybody, welcome back to the agenda. We've had a great discussion with candidates here from the Brandywine School District that are running for school board. Let's go a little bit south of the canal, south of the ditch with Dr. Justine Flint from the Smyrna School Board election. Welcome, Dr. Flint, how are you?
Thank you, thank you. I am wonderful. Life is great.
Life is great. I love it. Living the dream. All right, so you're running for school board here and there in Smyrna. We're trying our very best to understand why. You may have heard me talk to the gentleman briefly about, in this political climate in which we have, we're so worried about the people that are running that they meet the standard of just being decent. We're looking for decent folks at this point. Folks that are, that understand the common person and what they need and how we want their children, how they want for their children to succeed. Please tell us why you're that person.
I am definitely that person. I am running for Smyrna School Board Member-at-Large because I am deeply committed to supporting my community, supporting the district. I myself am a Smyrna native. And my school district poured so much into me. I literally was a statistic on so many levels. And because of the support of my community and my district, I'm now Dr. Flint. And not someone who may need a little bit of help. I can remember in elementary school, back in the 70s, my parents, both of my parents worked. And my mother would pick me up early from school every day. And the principal at that time, Ms. Harriet Burris, she followed my mom out, outside and said, hey, can I speak to you for a minute? This child leaves every day. She's missing important education and training at the end of the day. They do their wrap-ups. And my mom said, you know, we have to work and there's no one home, so she can't get on the bus by herself. Within a couple of weeks, Ms. Burris was contacting my mom, trying to set it up. So the principal of Clayton Elementary literally took me to my babysitters every day after school. And if she had a meeting, there were other teachers in the building that would sit with me, go to the gym with me. I am definitely for Smyrna School District and our educators. But I'm also want to be a voice for the parents and the children. Because the children's education is what's most important. But it also was my community that pushed me up when I made the wrong choices or made bad decisions. Like, there were people in my life that said, don't give up. You made a mistake, it's what you make out of that mistake. So I want to give back to the district and to the community that poured so much into me.
I love that. But just like any other district, there's areas for improvement, right? There's areas for improvement that may be well-known, there's areas of improvement that may not be well-known. And you, as a school board member, are letting the community know that you're, you're the first folks that can make a decision, that can change policy and change the path, not only for students, but for the district itself. So what in the Smyrna District do you see as being one of your great initiatives that you will begin with?
Okay, so actually, I have, I can think of at least three things right from the beginning that I would like to work on. I'd like to work on creating a funding so that our teachers could finally get the increase in salary that they deserve, better benefits. And I want them to have an increase in professional development, quality professional development. Number two, I'd like to explore an avenue regarding literacy. Because our literacy scores in Smyrna are not the highest. And I do believe that if we can find a creative way to meet these children where they are, then they would be more interested in reading, writing, and their studies. And lastly, I want to get the community involved and engaged in the school district's decisions. Attending the district meetings. Because I want the community to feel that sense of ours. I'm doing my part to help our children.
Yeah.
So those would be the three. Teacher benefits, salary, increasing the literacy scores, and building a better community involvement.
I think, I think the scores are low throughout the state. I know some districts do better than others, right? I know that Smyrna is not at the bottom and they're, but at the same time, everyone has room for improvement. What are, what is some feedback that you've gotten from parents in regards to these scores and how they're affecting their schools and their children?
So I spend some time at daycare centers here and there because of my job, the Boys and Girls Club. And the parents feel that the schools aren't doing enough to capture their child, their child's attention. Honestly, the parents are saying, I really don't want to share, but-
No, please, this is the time to share.
Yeah. They're saying, the teacher, the parents want to blame the teachers. And then the teachers say they don't have enough resources. So it's just a big circle of blaming, what are we going to do and how are we going to fix it? I'm a firm believer that if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. That's where building a team, the team approach comes. You want the teacher to value the parent's opinion, but you also want the parent to understand that they are their child's first teacher and that they need to build a team, a, build a team relationship with that teacher. And I think if the child sees that both my home and my teacher are on the same team, then maybe they will feel more motivated and encouraged to jump into what's going on in class.
So you're dealing with that. What do you say to the constituent who sees you at the Walgreens or the Wawa and says, these kids just need to buckle down and study and focus. They're just not focusing enough.
Well, each child is different. That goes into getting to know that child and seeing where Johnny falls and where Michelle falls on the education scale. You can't put, you can't put children all in a cookie cutter. They're all unique.
Do you think this is a technique problem or? This is my fear as a constituent in Delaware. We talked about in our previous segment about making sure that our property taxes are paid. So I know that my kids are going to a good school. But at the same time, I don't think that money can fix all of this. I think there has to be something, and maybe that goes to what you were saying in regards to training teachers. I think some of this has to be done. A great deal of this has to be done with, in the classroom.
Yeah. Now, I definitely am in favor of teachers getting their professional development. I definitely am in agreement with using the latest tools. Because a lot of times you have some teachers that are set in their ways and they just want to use what they've always used. But again, children are not cookie cutters. You have to, you're going to have to change up your approach every once in a while. You're going to have to look at where little Johnny or where Michael's coming from. You can't use the same tool year after year after year after year because you're not getting the same children year after year after year after year. So they got to be open to learning the new techniques, going to those professional development opportunities, and bringing that information back and sharing with the teachers that are in their district.
Yeah. I asked the gentleman here around the table, and I'll ask you the same exact question. Where do you see the Smyrna School District in three years?
Okay, I know what I would like to see. I would like to see our children's progress increasing and positive. I'd like to see them, I'd like to see the children excel in their studies. I would like to see the teachers also supported and valued in their jobs. And I'd also like to see the community coming together and seeing the school as our school and our children and enjoying the success of their, the children's outcomes. That's what I would like to see. However, that's going to take a lot of work and people that are willing to actively listen and create positive, create goals that are measurable and goals that you don't mind reevaluating every once in a while. Even if that means every three months or every six months to see if that goal is being met. If that plan is actually supporting the goal that you set.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm just curious, and this is a quick question for all four of you here. What, what are you using to track progress within your districts? What are you using? What's your bellwether that says, we're moving in the right direction? Dang on it, I feel good about what we're doing here.
For me, it's the final assessment scores. And that's just where we are right now. And right now, we're not, we're not doing very well at all.
Right. Yeah, Dr. Flint, Flint?
Yeah, I believe it's the test scores is what I'll, that's what they're using.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I would say, I would concur. We look at proficiency, even though at the same time, on the younger grades, especially, especially in the younger grades, that's not the only barometer, you know? That's why I think we have many testings. But it's just, test scores matter. And I think that, and I'm losing my train of thought, but when it comes down to our test scores, we got, we have to look at multi-factors and not just that. It's not enough, but I'm going to end there because-
Right, I understand.
My apologies.
I understand, Brian?
I would say school attendance, but then also test scores in the sense like Mr. Wilson was saying, that incorporate the teacher evaluations of the student. And the ultimate measure is when our high school students graduate and they go to the, to find a job and the employer says, oh, you went to Brandywine or Concord or Mount Pleasant, their next question is, when can you start?
Yes, yes, I love that. And you see that a lot with private schools. Oh, well, I went to Sally's or I went to St. Mark's or I went here. And it gives, because we talked about earlier on, Dr. Flint, off the air, we were talking about the importance that folks are forgetting about the socioeconomic drivers that education within our community pushes. Now, if we're talking about bringing jobs back to America, and we've heard that over the past two weeks, take it from whatever you, you know, however you want to take it. Well, we can't bring those jobs back if our students aren't proficient enough in reading and mathematics. I don't want them building anything for me if they're having trouble in school and doing all these other things. I, I don't. So we're not thinking about that. We're not thinking about, hey, we need to bring employers here to Delaware, just like we're trying to bring Merck and everything. And what, not only what type of workforce do we have, right? But for those employers that are trying to make sure that their employees are coming with them from wherever they're transferring to, that they feel comfortable enrolling their children in schools here in Delaware. And right now, looking at these schools, scores, excuse me, looking at these NIAP scores, looking at all these other scores, I wouldn't feel comfortable enrolling my child in public school. I don't know, especially with all these funding issues and everything else. I, I'm, I'm very nervous. But thank you, Dr. Flint. When we come back, Ms. Julia Kelleher is going to have a conversation with us. She's the CEO of First State Educate. She's going to tell us a little bit about why school boards are important and her role in that. Stay tuned.
Looking for a reliable and efficient way to travel around Delaware? Dart has a variety of routes and schedules to meet your needs. Providing service in Newcastle, Kent, and Sussex Counties. Whether you are commuting to work or exploring the sights and sounds of the state, our fleet of buses are well-maintained, equipped with modern amenities. Public transportation is the green alternative. Plan your trip today. Download our transit apps or visit dartfirststate.com.
Welcome back. Thank you so much for tuning into this excellent conversation in regards to school boards in Delaware. I know I'm learning a lot. I hope you all are learning a lot, especially you all that are living in Smyrna and part of the Smyrna School District and those that are in the Brandywine School District. We've had candidates for the first time here on the agenda talking about who they are, what they represent, and what their expectations are. So I'm excited. On this segment, we are going to have Dr. Julia Kelleher from First State Educate. And many may not know what that organization does, but it has a lot to do with school boards and making sure that you are aware of who's running. Dr. Kelleher, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much, Karen. Thank you for having me.
No problem. So please, tell us a little bit about First State Educate, what they do. And, and this is a busy season for you, so how are you all handling it?
It is, it's pretty busy, it's really busy. But we're thrilled, we're thrilled to see that there's more interest this year than last year in, in running for school board seats. So we're happy to support all the candidates and we're really encouraged that there will be greater turnout. But to answer the question, what does First State Educate do? We are the only nonprofit in Delaware that is solely focused on building the capacity of school boards. And that happens in a lot of different ways. It happens through our work with the community. It happens through our work with the candidates that you have, some of which you have there with you tonight. And it also happens through our work with seated school board members. We provide expert-level training, whether it's developed here in collaboration with other experts in Delaware or national experts. And we make that available free of cost to school boards across the state. The idea being that when those decision-makers have access to the training and resources and tools that they need to make the right decision, we'll see changes in district-level performance. And public schools in Delaware will move from 45th in the nation to some of the best.
Yeah, those numbers are frightening. We've been talking about them throughout this program, 45th in the nation. I believe firmly that school boards are vital in regards to getting those numbers up. Determining really what curriculum is going out there to the students, especially in this time where there's curriculum actually being taken off the shelves. Excuse the pun, but that's what's happening. And folks making those decisions on what they need to do and, and having some, how did we describe it? Just common sense-type folks making those decisions on the board. So I think that it's awesome what your organization is doing and, and what's to come. And so what would you tell somebody out there now that's thinking about running for school board?
I want to thank you first for your, for your attention, the attention that you're giving to the issue. It is, it has been historically overlooked as a lever for change. And if we look in the past 10 years, you know, what is, what's been tried to drive changes in outcomes in Delaware, school boards haven't been included in that conversation. And that tells me something.
Yeah.
So, but to answer the question, like the work with the candidates now, I mean, it's, for people who want to run, I think, you know, this year, the stage has been set. We have a slate of candidates, we're working with them. But even just today, I had, I received an email with someone expressing interest. And so there are many, many ways to engage, both with our organization, the preparation can begin now. We're going to launch in the fall a bench-building program, like with a curriculum, a structured curriculum for anyone who's interested in-
Oh, I love that. I love that. That makes political season very interesting when everyone knows, when everyone knows the issues, you know what I mean? It makes it very interesting.
Yes. We also have a knowledge hub that we're getting ready to launch. And that will provide, there are many aspects, so we're going to do it in a staged release. But right now, we have channels. So for example, of your school, for every school district, there's a channel inside of our knowledge hub. So if you're in Brandywine, you can go there to find about, find out about Brandywine issues. But also there are topical channels. And so if you want to learn about FOIA, if you want to learn about data-driven decision-making, if you want to learn about school safety. So we're really trying to provide multiple avenues for everyone who's interested in engaging in this work to find out more, to learn. And I think when we do that, what we're going to do is elevate, you know, the floor comes up and the barrier to entry, it starts, right? Because now you're looking for someone who's got a set of competencies and capabilities and comes to the table, really knowing the business of being a school board member.
Yeah. How can they find out more information? What's your website, address, social media, all that stuff? How can they reach out and have that communication with you?
Yep, our website is firststateeducate.org. So those three words all together, firststateeducate.org. And you get there, at the top, you can find like the different threads. We have a portfolio of work. You can look to see the candidates. I would encourage you to check out all of the candidates who have filed surveys with us. Their responses are there so you can make an informed decision. And we have a heavy push, I, I'm sorry, our socials are at the bottom of the website. So if you go there, you'll see our YouTube channel, we have two YouTube channels, we have a podcast. And you can sign up for the knowledge hub at the top of the website. But our big push is going to be the Election Day on May 13th, right? We really want to get everyone out there. And the call is to everyone in Delaware. We believe that improving public education in Delaware is a collective responsibility. So that no matter where you are, whether you're a business, whether you have children that attend public schools or private schools, if you're a taxpayer in Delaware. if you're a taxpayer in Delaware, you have a vested interest because that's your money that's funding this system, right? So we hope that you get engaged and we hope that you go out to vote. Because what we don't want to see is someone who didn't exercise that civic responsibility. And then a year later, there's a disaster with the school board and somebody says, well, why is that happening? And the question will be, well, did you go out and vote?
Right, right. And I don't want people to think, and I know that you'll echo this. And we have great people here on the program today. We have someone with a PhD, someone who runs a whole community, a lawyer. You don't have to be all of that in order to join the school board. First State Educate is ensuring that anybody who is interested, that has a firm belief in their community, wants to support education for not only their children, but the children of others, can be trained in order to be a great school board member, understand the issues, and be that common sense thinker that we're all looking for.
Exactly. I couldn't have said it better. And I think, you know, when you're on a board, it's impossible to know all the answers to all the questions in life.
Right.
So inevitably, there'll be things that we don't know.
We make it up here on the agenda every day.
But I think when you're comfortable enough to say, I don't know, can you explain that to me? Or I want to take a course in that or I want to learn more. I think evidencing that kind of curiosity about wanting to learn more is the best way to approach any kind of decision-making. So yes, we're here for people who have expertise in one area and one another and people who don't feel that they're actually ready to help them uncover, you know, that they could with a little preparation feel fully confident sitting in that seat.
I love it. We're going to post the information about First State Educate on the screen below for you all to click on, review, understand, ask questions. They are very responsive in regards to that. And you may not even have known that that organization existed. It's not going to cost you anything to be a part of it. Please, you have to understand the importance of school boards. I am learning so much just, not only as a parent, but as a constituent here, the importance of decision-making, especially in this political environment that we have now. We are finding out that it's those political decisions that are changing the course of people's lives. And don't you want to know who those people are? Don't you want to know what they represent? Excuse me? And don't you want to know that they were trained on the issues? I don't know. I want to. I want to. Dr. Kelleher, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Kirwan.
We appreciate it. All of you all here today from the Brandywine School District. Good luck in your elections. Good luck out there talking to families and getting that message across. I appreciate all that you're doing. I'm sure that all the folks in the Brandywine School District will and have. Please utilize us as a platform and communications moving forward. We look forward to having future discussions.
Absolutely.
Good luck. Thanks for joining. So there you have it. Three conversations, four conversations, one clear message. The responsibility for public education is no longer shared. It's being handed off and not quietly. Last week, states across the country were given a choice, 10 days to certify that their public schools do not include diversity, equity, or inclusion initiatives or risk losing federal funding. Let's be clear what that means for Delaware. Let's just clarify. During the 21-22 school year, federal funding made up 13.2% of our state's public school dollars, totaling $377.4 million, or nearly 2,700 per student. That's 6.3% higher than the national average. For the Department of Education itself, federal support accounts for about 10% of its total revenue. And yet, President Donald Trump has vowed to dismantle the U.S. Department of Education entirely. This isn't just a political talking point. It's not. This is the unraveling of a foundational promise that the federal government has a role in protecting the rights of all students, especially those too often left behind. Our children deserve an education that reflects truth, protects dignity, and prepares them for a world as it is, not as someone fears it might become. This means we don't erase history because it's uncomfortable. We don't gut equity because it's unpopular in some circles. And we don't silence diversity because it doesn't poll well during an election year. Public education is not a political favor to be granted or revoked. It is a right. And rights don't dissolve just because the federal government walks away from them. If Washington no longer sees education as a shared national commitment, then the responsibility, every ounce of it shifts to the State House, to Governor Matt Meyer, to the Delaware Department of Education, to every legislator who claims to stand for children. This is a moment that separates leaders from caretakers. One governs the future, the other just manages decline. And right now, Delaware is waiting to see whether its leaders will protect diversity, equity, and inclusion or quietly comply, waiting to see whether the values we teach in the classroom will be backed by action in the Capitol, waiting to see whether anyone is willing to lead when the stakes are highest. So yes, tonight, we heard from local candidates. But what happens next? That's on our state. We will remember who stood tall and we will remember who turned away. And we're watching. And I want to thank you for watching the agenda. We'll see you next time. Be safe, stay informed. And if you believe children deserve more, speak up before your silence becomes permanent. See you next time.